Visit cdc.gov/covid19 or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house like an old scarf, a bandana or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom and again from the top. And then two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle and you have yourself cloth face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard day in and day out to protect you. We are here for you, so please stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will save lives. Critical things like food shortages, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and other things will help you and others all in this together at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open and schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally. Pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65 or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your cough and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others so that we can protect those who are most susceptible.
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are nearby or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people, or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart problems or cancer are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds, stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart, lung, or kidney disease, or diabetes, may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue, or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do is make a plan for what to do if you do get sick. Know who will take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies too, including enough household items and groceries so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confusion, or blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19 or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house like an old scarf, a bandana or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom and again from the top. And then two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle and you have yourself cloth face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard day in and day out to protect you. We are here for you, so please stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will without a doubt save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open and schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65 or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your coughs and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others so that we can protect those who are most susceptible...
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are nearby, or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people, or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart or lung disease or diabetes are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds, stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart, lung, or kidney disease, or diabetes, may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue, or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do is make a plan for what to do if you do get sick. Know who will take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies too, including enough household items and groceries so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confusion, or blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19 or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house like an old scarf, a bandana, or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom and again from the top. And then, two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle and you have yourself clothed face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard day in and day out to protect you.
We are here for you, so please stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will without a doubt save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open? And schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65 or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your coughs and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others, so that we can protect those who are most susceptible...
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation, so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are... or be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people, or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions, like heart or lung disease or diabetes, are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds, stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions, like heart, lung, or kidney disease, or diabetes, may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue, or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home, such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do is make a plan for what to do if you do get sick. Know who will take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies, too, including enough household items and groceries, so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs, such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confusion, or blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19, or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house, like an old scarf, a bandana, or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom, and again from the top. And then, two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle, and you have yourself clothed face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard, day in and day out, to protect you. We are here for you, so please, stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will, without a doubt, save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open? And schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider, who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65, or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five...
Test. City Council, one, test, test.
City Council 2, test, test. Mayor, test. Mayor Pro Tem, test. Lesser, test. City Clerk, test. Martha, test. Lecturne, test, 1, 2. Bruce Moe, test, 1, 2. City Attorney, test, 1, 2. Main Wireless, test, 1, 2. Mic, Backup Mic, test, 1, 2.
Although, put it back on.
We're gonna do a Zoom test.
We're hot right now, by the way.
We're off right now.
The car's so good?
Yep.
The car's so good. It's cold in here.
It is cold.
What's going on? Like, and then you see it's cold, but it's like sweating like a...
We're hot.
Yeah.
Mark Dotty Productions, test, 1, 2.
And then, did Martha link guys know that George is gonna be...
Sitting in here, yeah.
He's gonna be sitting here, he's gonna be sharing on Word doc. I am sending it, that's for my success. He's gonna be here on the circuit, but he's gonna join like...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Martha's aware.
Yep.
Martha's aware.
Check, check.
I'm just gonna go around the side too.
And I'm on my cellphone. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're perfectly clear. Everything syncs up.
And you see video?
You're extra clear. I don't know if it's this updated Wi-Fi, but you look clearer than usual.
Okay, great. Does that conclude our Zoom test?
That concludes the test.
Okay, I'm gonna log out then, and then let's go back to analog now, right?
Okay.
Information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19, or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
So...
Oh, because you signed off if we do again, right?
I meant, uh, why am I not...
You're not making the lighting, it's the recording stuff.
It's because it's delayed.
Oh, okay. Some of it comes out, it shouldn't be soon.
So, can you cut to the PCP, so that I come up on the screen, or back, so you can see that?
Yep.
And how do you get me on screen? Here, pop?
Just on the screen, it's something you have to do it that way, you still... You don't have to be on the PCP.
So, why are we not...
Is your video off?
Because my audio's off?
I almost think it's because you signed off, we have to start it again. Don't have to make your cover since she edited it?
Oh, is it sound? Oh, okay, because I just made it.
Yeah, don't you... Okay, we have this like, PCP for him, so he's watching the show.
Oh, right, just like that.
Yeah, he's watching like the broadcast.
Just checking the broadcast.
Right, right.
Like, right now on, at home, uh, people are...
We're good?
Okay.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it is important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard, day in and day out, to protect you. We are here for you, so please, stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will, without a doubt, save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open? And schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65, or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your cough and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others, so that we can protect those who are most susceptible...
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation, so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These... These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are nearby, or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people, or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions, like heart or lung disease or diabetes, are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds, stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions, like heart, lung, or kidney disease, or diabetes, may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue, or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home, such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs, to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do is make a plan for what to do if you do get sick. Know who will take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies, too, including enough household items and groceries, so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs, such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confusion, or blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19, or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house, like an old scarf, a bandana, or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom, and again from the top. And then, two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle, and you have yourself clothed face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your families safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it is important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard, day in and day out, to protect you. We are here for you, so please, stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will without a doubt save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open? And schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65, or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your coughs and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others, so that we can protect those who are most susceptible...
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation, so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are nearby, or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people, or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions, like heart disease, Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart or lung disease or diabetes are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like: heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds. Stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart, lung, or kidney disease or diabetes may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home, such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do is make a plan for what to do if you do get sick. Know who will take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies too, including enough household items and groceries so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs, such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confusion, or blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19 or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house, like an old scarf, a bandana, or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom and again from the top. And then, two rubber bands, one on one side and one on the other side. Then you fold either side to the middle, and you have yourself cloth face covering. It's that easy.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your family safe.
Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing.
We're working hard, day in and day out, to protect you. We are here for you, so please, stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov.
Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will without a doubt save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Want restaurants to open? In schools? Want the economy to get back on track? You're not alone, and you can help make it happen. Stay six feet apart. Wash your hands. Wear a mask every time you leave your home. Choose to join the fight against COVID-19. Do your part. Slow the spread.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider, who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65 or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One, stay home. Two, monitor your symptoms carefully. If they worsen, call your healthcare provider. Three, rest and stay hydrated. Four, if you have a medical appointment, call ahead and let them know you may have COVID-19. Five, if your symptoms are severe, call 911. Six, cover your cough and sneezes. Seven, wash your hands often. Eight, stay away from others in your home. Use a separate bathroom. Nine, avoid sharing personal items. And 10, clean all surfaces that are touched often. For more information on COVID-19, visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's take care of ourselves and each other.
Why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others so that we can protect those who are most susceptible.
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants. It all just means physical separation so that you have a space between you and others.
For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
The virus that causes coronavirus disease is spreading in some of our communities. This disease, also known as COVID-19, is thought to spread mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes. These droplets can spread to the mouth, nose, or hands of people who are nearby or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. Take steps to lower your risk of getting sick. Here are some things you should do. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. You can also use hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Take extra measures to put distance between yourself and others. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home if you're sick, except to get medical care. If you have severe symptoms, please call 911. Cover coughs and sneezes with a tissue or the inside of your elbow. Only wear a face mask if you're sick and around other people or if you need to take care of someone who is sick. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart or lung disease or diabetes are at higher risk for more serious illness from COVID-19. This group should consult with their healthcare provider about additional steps to stay protected. For more information on COVID-19, please visit cdc.gov/covid19. Let's work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
Who is most at risk for coronavirus? People over 65, people with underlying medical conditions like heart disease, chronic lung disease, asthma, diabetes, people undergoing cancer treatment, and people with weakened immune systems. What should you do if you or a loved one is at higher risk? Avoid close contact with people, avoid crowds, stay home if you can, wash your hands frequently. Learn more ways to protect yourself and others at coronavirus.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jay Butler, Deputy Director for Infectious Diseases at CDC. I'd like to talk to you about the new virus that causes the disease, COVID-19. Older adults and people who have severe chronic medical conditions like heart, lung, or kidney disease, or diabetes, may be at higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19. If you are one of the people at increased risk for serious COVID-19 illness, it's especially important for you to take action to reduce the risk of getting COVID-19 now. The first thing you can do is take care of your own health. Wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if soap and water are not available. Cover your coughs or sneezes with a tissue, or cough or sneeze into your elbow, not your hands. Avoid contact with people who are sick. Clean and disinfect surfaces in your home, such as counters, tabletops, and doorknobs to remove germs. Use household cleaning sprays or wipes according to the label instructions. The next thing you can do, plan for what to do if you do get. Take care of you if your caregiver gets sick. Talk to your healthcare provider about getting extra necessary medications to have on hand. Get enough supplies too, including enough household items and groceries so you can stay home for a few weeks if you have to. The third thing you can do is pay attention to what's happening locally. If COVID-19 is spreading in your community, stay home as much as possible and avoid crowds. If you get sick with fever, cough, or shortness of breath, call your healthcare provider. If you develop warning signs, such as difficulty breathing, persistent pain or pressure in your chest, confused blueness of the lips or face, these may be signs of serious illness. Call 911. For more information and the latest resources, please visit cdc.gov/covid19 or call 1-800-CDCINFO. That's 1-800-232-4636.
We know many of you are concerned with COVID-19. We are too. Manhattan Beach Police Department and the Manhattan Beach Fire Department are trained in all types of emergencies to keep you and your family safe. Although we may not have all the answers during these uncertain times, it's important that you stay home and practice social distancing. We're working hard day in and day out to protect you. We are here for you, so please stay home for us.
Communities are starting to feel the financial impact of COVID-19, commonly called coronavirus. But we want you to know that there is help. We have disability insurance for workers who are ill or medically quarantined due to COVID-19. Paid family leave is available for those caring for an ill or medically quarantined family member. And unemployment insurance for reduced hours or lost work. We're all in this together. For information on how to stay healthy, visit covid19.ca.gov. Staying home will slow the spread of COVID-19 and will without a doubt save lives. Critical things like food, pharmacies, laundromats, and more remain available. Those who work in health, food supply, and law enforcement will continue to perform their jobs. Programs like paid sick leave, unemployment, and others will also still continue. If you do leave home, keep six feet between you and others. We are all in this together. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov. As a mother and a wife, I understand how challenging this moment is for our families and our communities. That is why our state is responding at every level of government to slow the spread of COVID-19 while ensuring our most vulnerable Californians have what they need. But we can each do our part, and it starts by staying home. I know this is a big sacrifice for so many, but staying home saves lives. Learn more at covid19.ca.gov.
Hi, I'm Dr. Nancy Messonnier from CDC. As of this morning, March 14th, CDC reported more than 2,000 cases of COVID-19 and 50 deaths from 49 states and District of Columbia. Today, I want to talk to you about what you should do if you have symptoms. Now, some of this depends on what's going on locally, so please pay attention to your local situation. The first thing to know, though, is most people are going to get exposed to COVID-19, and many people will get sick. But the majority of people will recover with only mild illness. So if you're young and healthy, you might not actually need to see a doctor, and you might not need to get a diagnostic test. There actually isn't a specific treatment for COVID-19, so you really might be able to ride this out at home. If you are older or have underlying illnesses, you need to contact your healthcare provider who can give you specific advice about what you should do. And of course, if you have life-threatening illness, you should call 911. It's really important that we protect those who are most vulnerable to COVID-19, and that's older adults and people with underlying illnesses. We need to work together to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities.
With coronavirus spreading, people at higher risk must take extra precautions. You're at higher risk if you're over 65 or if you have an underlying medical condition. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
Here are the top 10 things you can do if you think you might have coronavirus or COVID-19. One.
...
I have a microphone here. There we go. All right. Settle down, public. Full house tonight. All right. Calm down. All right, welcome to your city council meeting of Tuesday, March 14th, 6:00 PM here in council chambers. This is a city council adjourned regular meeting. We're going to go over our work plan tonight. I know the excitement is rippling through the crowd. And we're going to start, though, with our Pledge of the Flag. Chief Lang.
Absolutely. Please drop the pledge of flag. Do you write it over your heart? Ready to begin?
The President of the United States of America. To the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Really well done. Isn't it?
Impressed.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Haworth?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Proton Montgomery?
Here.
Mayor Napolitan?
Here.
That takes us to public comments. No ceremonial items. Takes us to public comments. These are public comments. That takes us to public comments. No ceremonial items. Takes us to public comments. These are public comments of three minutes per person. Anyone who wants to speak on anything on the agenda or anything within the subject matter within the jurisdiction of Manhattan Beach, the city council. You are welcome to do so. We ask that if you're going to speak on anything on the agenda, that you do it now or then, but not both. So we will start. Open it up. We have a line forming. Okay. Checking Zoom. Wow. Did we notice this meeting? All right. Just waiting for Richard to come in, I guess. That takes us to general business, which is the status of the current fiscal year 2022-23 city council work plan and development of the fiscal year 23-24 work plan. City manager Mo.
Yes, thank you. And as you described it, the work plan before this evening is from fiscal year 22-23. And we will be reviewing that with council and then developing a work plan for fiscal year 23-24. George will start us out with a brief presentation. The department heads will cover the work plan items that are in their particular area of expertise. They will also review what are what we call departmental work plan items. So there's a city council work plan, but the departments, in addition to that, have many projects on their own that aren't part of the formal council work plan. But we want you to be aware of it because these are also priorities for the departments to work on. Typically, the things that are on the council work plan are our policy objectives of the council. And in fact, tonight, as we go through the list, I'm going to suggest that there are some items that are on the council work plan. That if you want to continue those, we actually move them either to a departmental work plan. Or in some cases, if they're capital improvement projects, more appropriately listed simply on the CIP plan, which, of course, the council funds and staff takes from there. I want to point out, as I do every year, that these items are in addition to what staff does day in, day out. So this is not all they're working on. So as we come up with these objectives and these priorities for the staff, it's helpful if you keep that in mind that these are things that we're doing in addition. However, if there are really high priorities for you, we need to know that so that we can factor that in accordingly to the workload. After tonight, we will come back. George has the schedule for us, but we will take your items. And tonight, if there are new items added, we'd like consensus on the council, basically three votes to have it move forward so that it does appear on the work plan. And then we'll come back at a later date in order to have you adopt the work plan. And then, in the bigger picture, these items end up being funded, if necessary, through the budget process or CIP process, as the case may be. So with us, that unless there are any questions, I'm going to ask George to go through the PowerPoint. And all the department heads are here to answer your questions, to give their brief presentations and talk about what they've got going on. And a few accomplishments thrown in for good measure. So thank you for your attention tonight, and I'll turn it over to George.
Any questions? None. All right.
Honorable Mayor Napolitan, members of the city council, George Gabriel, assistant to the city manager. The city council, thank you for taking the time out tonight. We'll be going over a variety of things, including, as city manager Mo indicated, the department items, the city council work plan items, and celebrate some accomplishments as well that we've had. And so. Okay. So we'll begin with a work plan overview. Then we'll review the current work plan. We'll consider carrying forward certain items that city council direction. Then we will go on to develop the next year's work plan in consideration of the carry forward items or new items that the city council would like to direct staff to. So the timeline, obviously, tonight, we'll be developing the draft city council work plan document. On May 16, we will come back and review and potentially adopt that through a city council action. And then, obviously, as city manager Mo indicated, we'll be incorporating those items into next year's fiscal year budget when it's tentatively agendized for budget adoption. So this is, this work plan layout kind of illustrates our revised work plan. We've kind of had it, or we've kind of utilized this layout for about two years or so. And the idea is that we're trying to give a quick snapshot of these projects in an intuitive way that kind of hits key points. And obviously, the layout that you see before you is the title and summary, quick facts on them, including the target due date, the funding source, the priority level, as well as the, as well as the target due date and status. So, oh, and obviously, the completed action items, actions pending, and the next city council there. Okay, so in summarizing our current work plan, there's about 28 active items across nine city departments. Obviously, many departments or many items cross over multiple departments. And so attached to the city council agenda packet is a departmental matrix that kind of goes over that cross collaboration that exists across departments. Because as, as you all know, we're all team here, but many of these items do require collaboration and communication. So as city manager Mo indicated, we do have department items. And so department items are things that are, that staff is dedicating significant time and resource to that are not currently on the city council work plan. Why is this differentiated? Quite honestly, because the city council has a prerogative to add or remove items. And so the departments have come up with items that the city council or the, would like the city council to be aware of, of the significant projects or initiatives. And so as you can see on the slide above, that totals about 52 projects across the nine city departments. And if you'd like to look at the details of all those items, they are on page 75 of your packet. Additional item is commission items. And so as part of the boards and commissions handbook, staff is also responsible for assisting with those commission work plans. And so the city council is aware of those commission work plans because we recently had a city council meeting in January about those. Following direction received at that meeting, that, that contained about 29 projects or initiatives that staff is currently dedicating to. And so obviously, these are the planning commission, the parking and public improvements commission, parks and recreation commission, the cultural arts commission, and the library commission. So we'll begin now by going by each department and going over accomplishments, as well as what their current work plan items are. So first off, with management services, I'll go over a couple of the accomplishments, things that we've done in the past year or since our last update to the city council. And so obviously, we continue to invest in the city's homeless response. We actually now have a dedicated outreach navigator through a contract with Harbor Interface Services. And we do offer housing resources through our shared collaborative housing program. This resulted in about 39 placements in the past year comprised of interim and stable housing placements. We've also finalized the Bruce's Beach history report. That was obviously a large effort with a task force. And that amounted to an 85-page document with 15 public meetings as well. We also coordinated two general, two general municipal elections with Los Angeles County, two city council member seats, changed hands, as well as we had two cannabis initiatives. So it was a fairly beefy general municipal election. And then we also had the parcel tax ballot measure in June 22, 2022. And while the city no longer, the city no longer is the one that administers all aspects of the election. It's, it's a matter of the city has to be a very key player in administering, coordinating, communicating with those individuals that are, that are sponsoring the ballot initiatives or city council member seats. We also placed the Bruce's Beach plaque. That is an initial phase, and that will be showcased, I believe, this Saturday at the dedication ceremony that will be occurring at Bruce's Beach Park. Additionally, we also redesigned the city website with updated branding. This, this item, obviously, you can see that our city website now doesn't contain that, that kind of wavy logo that it had before. Now it contains our new logo branding, and that's implemented throughout the entire city website, as well as some updated navigation pages. So our current work plan items, the first one is a centralized citywide contract management system. And so this contract managed system is there for record keeping purposes and to ensure accurate workflows, legal compliance, and insurance requirements. And so this has been an initiative of the city clerk's office and the IT department particularly. And obviously, the city executes a variety of contracts that a lot of times are before the city council. But there are many that aren't before the city council that we need to make sure that we're following all legal compliance in those ways. We also have a plan to address homelessness. You recall in 2018, August of 2018, that the city council approved the plan to address homelessness. Since then, the city council has taken a variety of actions, some on the plan, some of them not on the plan, to address homelessness. And so I kind of detailed that earlier. And fourth is the city council communications policy. This policy is to address governance, communications between all groups, whether it's the public, whether it's the city council, whether it's staff, as well as guidelines and processes to accommodate requests. And then the last thing is continuing to enhancing the city website and email communications. So obviously, one aspect of that is enhancing the search functionality. That's an ongoing thing that obviously I know that council members have been very interested in addressing, as well as enhancing our email communications so that we can somewhat move beyond what our current website provider provides. And so that will include the management services department.
And this is one of those areas in which I mentioned that I think we could probably move some things around. Centralized citywide contract management systems, while it's important, I don't know that I see this as something that needs to be on the council's work plan. It's really a staff-driven process at this point. You've given us the resources to execute it. So my recommendation would be to move this to the departmental work plan and allow us to continue to work on that. The other three, I think, you know, are appropriate on the council work plan. In particular, the communications policy, which I know has been on there for a very long time, even back to my predecessor. But I'm excited to tell you that in working with council member Haworth and Ali Latrani in my office, we are starting to develop something that's going to be even bigger and bolder. It's going to be a governance handbook for the council to review and determine what the norms will be for the council operating. Everything from who sets the agenda to communications with staff prior to council meetings, asking questions prior to council meetings so we can have an effective use of meeting time. Those types of things will be in there, as well as who are the spokespeople for the city when the press contacts us. And there's a pecking order for that as well. So those will be some of the things we're going to address, as well as some of the existing policies that frankly just don't have a home right now, whether it's the banner policy, the sunshine policy, those types of things. We know they exist, but this will be a repository for that as well. So I think we've got some good energy on that going forward. So.
Okay, hold on. We got some questions or comments here. Councilmember Franklin?
Yes. Thank you. And thank you. I'd like to address the, your, you know, the homeless process and procedure, which is going very well, I believe. The outreach, they're reaching the homeless. They're getting them into, we re-upped to five. And this isn't, this is for more the public benefit is that they've, you know, we've gone from two to five shelter beds so that we can be compliant with the law, but also we want to get them off the street. So, and, you know, and the hiring of the dedicated, you know, housing navigator has really been helpful and contributed to that. When going through this, I was just wondering, is there a process, you know, we have Measure H funds, which are, you know, a quarter percent on the sales tax that are going to homeless initiatives with the county. Is there a way that we can, since we have been successful, we are repatriating homeless with their families, we are getting them housed, we are getting them off the street. Is there any way that we can go to the county and ask for a grant? Because we've got, I think by, by my calculation, you know, looking at the numbers on page 13 of the staff report, it's a combined 123,910. And I know some of that is already given to us when we had the three-city grant, and then we added to that to get our full time. But is there any way for moving forward, I'm thinking for moving forward, since we have shown success, I believe, you know, with the, you know, the combination of private-public and be safe, the city, the county. The gaps are being filled. And I understand the county can't do everything and be everything to everybody because it is just too big. But if we've, can prove that we've done something successfully and we got the numbers to prove it, is can we go and, and ask for more funds from the, from the county?
Is the question, can cities individually apply for grants to address homelessness at the county?
What he said. Yeah. Councilmember Franklin and Mayor Napolitan, yes, there is a process that you can request funding. And unfortunately, I feel like you stole my thunder because I was actually going to come in the next couple months with a proposal potentially. And so one thing that the South, that the county does is that they distribute these funds to the council of governments. And the council of governments then selects which cities within the COG receive funding. There is a fund called Local Solutions Fund on Homelessness that staff is looking into. And so we're having exploratory conversations to see if we can either get our current services that we have via dedicated outreach or shared collaborative housing grant funded, or we can fund it, we can fund new programs potentially. That's always a possibility. But from my understanding is that the county does have available funding through the COG, or the COG has available funding given by the county. And so we're going to continue to look at that and see if we can address current expenditures, as well as future expenditures to address homelessness.
Let me ask the city manager, though. So is this the time where we want to add or subtract? Or is this just, we still in the overview of the work plan?
You can add or subtract at this point. There will be multiple opportunities to do that.
Can we say the website sucks?
That's a very good question.
Needs to be improved.
He doesn't mean ours, folks. He means counties.
It's a great question. No, I mean ours.
I think counties.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery, you got a question?
Thank you. Two things. Took another vacant's comments, and then George went on behalf of our city manager to the ICA-sponsored one-on-one chat with the CEO of LA County. She handles all of the money. She heard all the cities complain, to Joe's complaint, that the cities are not receiving this money that we're all paying for, not equally, not equally receiving any money besides the grant that we shared with Redondo Hermosa years ago. And just a note, Joe knows, understands it, and everybody else here is it too. We always apply when the grant period is over or we run low on funds. It's automatic with Janice Hahn and everybody else, our supervisors, whoever they are now. But we always apply. But this new position, new lady that's there now says, look, we hear you. We want all cities to apply for money by themselves. Don't wait for the period. Just apply. So George will tell you more about that the next step. My question was easier than that, not talking about the website. Going back to the citywide contract management systems, Bruce?
Mm-hmm.
Most of your comments here on every other area seems to have a start date. But this one, I couldn't find a start date on there. When do we start talking about this? Maybe, city members, was it 2017?
Yeah, we were on council.
It was after Al Gore invented the internet.
Somewhere between Al Gore and yesterday. But how long have we been doing it? I don't even know how long it's been going on.
A while.
You know, this has been going on a while. I don't have an exact date. But I, what I can tell you is that at one point, this, this item was removed, and then it was reintroduced due to a city council action to fund it.
Probably a prior conference.
And so I think the latest action, I think it was in 2020, I believe.
It came back a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Because there were, there were a couple of actions we took. One was to get the DocuSign, which was to get, and then the other was to consolidate so we knew when different contracts were expiring. And so we didn't miss any renewals or options or things like that, right?
Yes, but I think the DocuSign was, was separate from it. Obviously, it was an important aspect to address contract issues. But with the, with the beginning of COVID-19, it kind of offered a process to really, or provide, provide an opportunity to initiate the DocuSign process for, on behalf of the city, or citywide, I should say.
Were there additional things?
Just follow up. So I remember when Lisa started that. I was, you guys started the DocuSign. No problem with that. I was curious. Someone asked that question. I couldn't find anywhere notes when we started it. I remember it started and stopped. I remember it started and stopped, maybe Liberty went out of business, something happened, and we lost someone that was doing the scanning, we lost a gap in there. So my answer is going to be, we've had multiple starts from 2015 or 13, whatever started until COVID, this issue of DocuSign, council restarted it again in 2020 with additional funding. It's ongoing, we don't have, the end date is third quarter '23. Are we still on target with that date?
Now, Lisa, where are you?
Sorry, I think, are you calling it DocuSign with the document management system?
Yes.
So the reason we took that off the work plan, or we are on, on our goal, it's just that the imaging system, it's, every time we kept looking at the departments, the documents that they need to scan, it's more current, more current. So we are changing it to ongoing versus going back. There are a few documents that are microfished that we need to do in HR, but they do have the funding for that. That was, we're keeping that one separate.
Okay. So the answer the public is going to be, we're on target '23, third quarter, continue going forward. Thank you. Nothing further, your honor.
Okay, then I'll throw one out there. We got an email today or yesterday, and it was regarding diversion program. It's something that I had spoken about before as well, for, to help address homelessness. Same idea really as homeless court, except something that we could do ourselves. We'll have to get some approvals from some folks to do it, but all the talk that we've had about prosecution, who does it, you know, do we want to contract with Redondo or not, we've had a prosecutor in this city, we've, we've never not had a prosecutor. Right now, the focus of prosecution in the city has been through Joan Jenkins, and now we share her with the Beach Cities Health District to do diversion for youth when rules or laws are broken, to get them on the right track. The idea here would be to have a diversion program similar to homeless court, but also similar to what we're doing with diverted youth, by having consequences for those who are homeless and break the rules and otherwise aren't prosecuted, or, you know, we need to get them on the right track to get, again, services and housing hopefully through the process. But, you know, in our approach to the DA, in asking to prosecute state misdemeanors, this might be a way for us to address what we want to do if we ask for a limited ability to be able to have that as a stick for Joan or whoever else that we want to hire to take this on, to have that as a backup to prosecute those state misdemeanors in our homeless diversion program, if, you know, we can do that with the DA's approval. Not asking for prosecution of all state misdemeanors in all cases, but let's dip our toe into the water with just addressing the homeless, any infractions by the homeless, where we can get them on a better path and skip the contracting at a much higher expense, you know, with another city, and try and do that ourselves. That would be something I would like to see added to our work plan.
I have a question, just a question about what you just proposed, just so I understand.
Sure, I understood what I just said. I'll try.
We'll get there, we'll get there. It's in lieu of going to the DA's office to talk about, we want to be able to prosecute all our state misdemeanors, let's start with, we want to be able to create a diversion program for homeless in our jurisdiction, sort of like the homeless court in Redondo.
It's, which is a diversion program itself.
Yeah, it is. So it's akin to that. So what you're saying is, because I think, was it MPT, almost Mayor Montgomery and Councilmember Franklin, who were on the, who were going to go to the DA and try to work that out? So are you saying, let's put it on the work plan for them to really focus on homeless diversion? Okay, so that's, that's great, I support that.
Councilor Lester?
I'm prospectively supportive, but I just want to talk about process for this meeting, given that there was, I thought, three votes to bring back this proposal to go to the DA's office. Is that the time to talk about exactly what you're going to be proposing to the DA, or are you seeking at this meeting in the work plan to come up with the specific direction of what it is maybe doing?
I would say that they can do both. You can go back and ask for prosecutions of state misdemeanors in general, but then I would also throw out the possibility of just doing it to establish our own homeless diversion hearing, so that there's a backup. You know, we've asked twice now for the full, I was going to say something, all right, for the, the whole enchilada. You know, maybe now we just, we go for the taco.
I'm receptive, but I'd like a further staff preparation of what exactly you're proposing, which sounds good to me, but I think staff is already planning to come back with, I thought, a staff report of this proposal to go speak with the district attorney's office. Am I understanding that correct?
Add it to that.
Yeah, and we sent an email to the district attorney's office last week and have not heard back from them yet, but indicating that we do want to try to resurrect a meeting with them to have further discussions.
Here's my proposal, so we can keep this process moving, is maybe we can ask that we have an upcoming council meeting where we just discuss exactly what it is the request is, because I appreciate what you're suggesting. I just would welcome a little more context. I'm curious, what other cities might be doing the same thing?
None.
None?
I mean, no one's asking to prosecute state misdemeanors, because we know the DA has not agreed to that with anyone else but the 10 cities who are able to do that now. You need a stick, at the end of the day, to get folks to divert. When Joan talks to the youth, the backup is, well, if you don't follow through with all the things that we agreed that you were going to do, you know, stay in school, study, community service, whatever it might be, then she says, okay, we're going to take this to the court, we're going to, we're going to prosecute. And so this would be the same thing that homeless court is doing, where you have a diversion, where you say, okay, if you get on the meds, if you do this, that, and the other, you apply for housing, you get services.
I understand, and I'm potentially supportive, I'm just clarifying process. Are you seeking to give that direction tonight to staff to pursue that?
Well, I was going to put it on the work plan, but.
Yeah, and I think that's really, the objective here is to help us build the work plan, that we come back then and flush out the details with you, won't necessarily decide tonight what those details are.
Yeah, I mean, I'd give you a vote to move it forward.
Okay, Councilor Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So having seen the homeless court in action a couple of times, once in Redondo, once in Hermosa, and if we were to go with them, we would be hosting it for, I believe, three months out of the year, or four months out of the year. It would be four months for each city. And, and that tackled a lot of logistical problems as far as, and Beach Cities Health District would be close, because you got, they got to get there. When I heard last week, I think it was David, when we were at the COG Congress, is it, they call it the Congress, or whatever they called it, and, you know, Supervisor Hahn mentioned that, you know, they were going to have a care court, but it was going to be in Norwalk. And you're just thinking, look at the logistics to take our, you know, our unhoused to, to Norwalk. So I like the idea of this, I think it is a way to wiggle in. You know, but the, the things that they're, it's not just diversion, it's also expunging, you know, their record, it's getting them a driver's license, and it's getting, and it's repairing their credit. All functions that the homeless court does very well now, you know, the Redondo Beach ones, because that, that person on the road to sustain it, to sustainable housing, needs all those things in order for a landlord to accept them as a tenant. You know, a lot of things that we take for granted, it's difficult, they lost their driver's license, or they never applied for one, or, you know, oh, and also, you know, addiction to drugs, you know. So it's pretty complex, and I think there's a way to probably work around it, or work with that, and that they could maybe just aggregate all these cases and take them to the, you know, to the district attorney and do the expunging and the credit repair and things like that. So I, I think it's worth looking at.
All right. All right. Anything else for the moment? Okay, that's one. Moving on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Napolitano, members of this city council. My name is Steve Shreli, City's Finance Director. Let's go over a few of our accomplishments from last year. We also had a busy year. Our first item, refunded Metlock's water and wastewater COPs. We did take advantage of low interest rates, along with the city's AAA rating to refinance the COP, and we were able to save $784,000 over the next 10 years, 784,000. We also implemented a ClearGov, which is a budget builder software. This helps us utilize formatted templates that include data-driven charts and tables. It reduces time spent assembling information from different various file types. It also helps to deliver the budget book in a website-friendly, interactive format, easy to follow content and compile the information and, and print it out for the end user looking at our website. We also integrated AMI data into the finance utility billing module. This is the administrative part of the digital water meters that Public Works did an amazing job putting into the ground, and now we are implementing, putting it in as a, as a piece to our utility billing software, which we're launching this week, excited about that. And this is a game changer, this will allow us to import and export the data as we please. It'll have updates to our water system throughout the day and help customers be able to get that information out, and we're going to go live with this in the next month as well. And mainly, we updated our financial policies. This was updating our comprehensive financial policies to resolve in a better alignment with current practices and clarify some language that we needed to update over the last three or four years. We revised policies referenced more recently in the adopted policies, such as debt management and disclosure policy, as well as the budget policy and the unfunded pension liability policy as well. George, next slide, please. And for work plan items, so last year, we had the stormwater assessments and fees, well, which was postponed. So perhaps it would, you know, if council wants, or wishes to put that back on, we could put it on as a more, to consider revenue enhancement, such as water, stormwater assessments, as well as sales and use tax, for a new revenue, source of revenue for capital projects and infrastructure, we can add that on if council, council pleases, as a more broader item than just stormwater fees. And we will, we are looking to take a comprehensive report to the finance subcommittee the later, latter part of April, I think it's on 4/20. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilor Lester?
I'd like to take on the tougher pitch here. I think we should put stormwater back on our work plan, along with the dedicated revenue stream for capital improvement projects. And my reasoning is simple. This council can tackle this sort of issue in a way that the next council may not be able to. With the departure, as hard it is to think about, of two longstanding council members, whoever is elected in a year and a half are going to be new, they're going to have questions. There's, who knows what political winds will be blowing at that time as well, but they'll likely be with at least two new council members, an uncertainty about what, how to proceed, whether to go bold, and the stormwater measure. Can you remind us again of just a little bit, some of the figures here, in terms of how that's eating into our general fund, and projected to eat into a general fund even more over the next five-year period?
That is correct, in the tune of about $11 million over the next five years, and that will be subsidized through the general fund, since the assessments haven't been updated since 1996.
So I've been part of councils that have kicked this down the road, and it's been kicked down the road for decades. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do any better than what councils have done over the decades before us, but at some point, this is going to be a bigger problem than it is already. So I would propose stormwater and then capital improvement projects. We have been talking about having a funding source of some kind to deal with assets in our city, buildings in our city, projects in our city, that we know are nearing or beyond the end of their useful lives. I was just in Jocelyn Center today. Three of us here voted for minor improvements back in 2011. I went back and watched the tape of that, intended to extend the useful life by 10 years. That was 12 years ago. We are going to have to deal with Jocelyn. We have no dedicated funding stream to be able to pay for the sort of costs that we know, just based from dealing with the Scout and Senior Center, are going to be involved in upgrading it, particularly if we want to provide underground parking. So I welcome exploring that and putting in our work plan, even if ultimately this council won't be successful, but I'm hopeful that we can at least begin to explore it.
Okay, Councilor Franklin?
Thank you. I agree with the stormwater. I was going to kind of suggest that as well, but the reasons you stated here, with the eminence grief, you know, the, you know, the experience we have here.
Sacrificial lambs.
Yeah, well, you know, but your name's on it. But, but it makes sense. I mean, so one question I have, is it a two-thirds majority or a simple majority for?
It would be a simple majority unless you had it for a specific use for, if it was general, it'd be a majority. If it was specific use, it'd be two-thirds. So we'd have to come up with, but the very, the very first thing we would have to do is, again, go through the finance subcommittee, provide the plan, and then get an engineer's report, and it's a long process to go through it.
Is it a two-step?
It's a two-step, it would be a two-step.
So there's a majority protest vote first?
Right.
And assuming that doesn't succeed, then you have a majority vote. It's probably weighted by the assessments, but Quinn will have to weigh in on that.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So we've got experience with the, with elections. We defeated cannabis in the city and the like, and I think I heard you say, you whispered it, Richard, that you were going to walk the city and knock on every door.
For the stormwater, 4/20.
Oh, boy.
Also, also there is, you know, there is two ways you can go about it, and without getting too far into it, but you would be able to do a mail-in ballot, or you could put it on an actual election. So there's, there's two, two models, and again, it would be, whatever council's direction would be as to which model, you know, would be the best for our city. But there are two, two ways of doing it.
Right.
So one is you don't have to wait.
And do we have time to put it on 2024?
You do, but you don't necessarily have to wait to put it on an election, you can just go through the process and go through the, do outreach and do a mail-in, mail-in vote, it'd be weighted and.
And it's our own, we don't have to go to the county for the counting of votes.
Prop 218, right?
Correct, yes.
The exception would be, as Councilmember Lester was discussing, the second part of that, which was perhaps a sales tax or some other funding source, which would be, have to be on the same date as a council election, meaning November of '24.
That's different.
And then, again, as Steve said, it would be a simple majority if it's a general tax, supermajority if it's for a specific purpose.
Right. Okay, okay. All right, Councilor Horwath?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, with the comments. I mean, I think that, you know, we explore the Prop 218 for the stormwater, and I think we explore whether it's dedicating, you know, keeping any, we have a quarter of a percent.
Left, yeah.
Left on the sales tax that we could designate locally. We are foolish if we let that go.
Sorry to interrupt, we have three quarters.
Oh, heck, yeah. No, sorry, folks, I mean, but we have up to that. But, you know, if we don't vote as a community to do that, then this county will take that. So I absolutely support exploring those options for all the reasons stated. So it sounds like we would have three, three move that forward.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I mean, with the dynamic duo here, how can we?
No pressure, by the way. Mr. Mayor, if we could go back to management services for just one moment, did the council concur with taking centralized contracts off of the work plan onto the department work plan?
I support that.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Your honor, did you speak, or I will, take the floor for a second. Those who are wondering, the finance subcommittee is talking about the stormwater plan on for April 20th, so it hasn't escaped our attention. We just want to make sure we follow the process and do it the right way. I'm glad to see the council majority wants to go that way, in fact, all of us want to go that way, but that's being heard the first time on the process on April 20th. That's all.
Yeah, I think the only question, and I think why it hasn't been on the work plan is that we want to work through the kinks before anybody gets their, their backs up about it. When you just say, oh, we're going out for an increase in something, it gets everyone up until you go through, get the details, explain the, everything. So we didn't want any miscommunication, that's why it hasn't been on there.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Where are we next?
HR.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Jenkins, I'm your human resources director, and I'd like to draw your attention to the first two items here on our accomplishments list. list, as these are directly related to the HR department work plan you'll be reviewing. On our work plan is a review of all of our internal policies and procedures, as well as our city personnel rules. The completion of labor negotiations last year, as well as the adoption of compensation plans for both unrepresented full-time employees and part-time employees are directly related to that, as many of our personnel rule provisions that previously related to compensation benefits and other terms and conditions of employment are now a part of separate standalone documents that will go to council periodically for update. This provides full transparency to the benefits and compensation for unrepresented employees and also provides ease of understanding in our MOUs for the processes and procedures that govern their employment, rather than having to look at multiple documents. Additionally, I'd like to highlight just the increased volume of recruitment that the team has been working on. As you can see, in our last fiscal year, there were 64 full-time positions filled. So just to put this in perspective, this is about three times the number as prior years. And that relates to both, you know, increased turnover. We had an early retirement incentive. We had a phenomenon known as the Great Resignation, and we've also had reorganizations throughout the city. We've had new positions approved. So currently, year-to-date, in comparison to the number that we filled in last fiscal year, we've now filled 61 year-to-date. So we're tracking to have even higher a volume of recruitment activity this year. And there are a number of positions that were approved, both at the beginning of this fiscal year, as well as throughout the year, particularly in our public safety departments, which are always our highest priority for filling positions. And that brings us to the human resources work plan item for the city council's consideration. And again, this item was expanded beyond just the personnel rule update to also include a comprehensive review of the policies that govern employment for our city employees. There's a number of them. They had not been updated previously in many years. So staff is working on that right now with a current target completion date of quarter four of 2023. And if council is so inclined, that this could be moved to a departmental work plan item. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
As long as it gets done, I'm happy to move it. I've been asking for this. As long as it gets done, I'm fine with moving it. Will I have an update when it's done? Is that it?
Probably before that.
Order four.
Anybody opposed to removing it from the work plan? This council's work plan and keeping it at the departmental work plan?
No issues.
Okay.
Thank you, and we will be happy to continue to provide updates to council.
Can I, one quick question? You sit.
Hold on. Let me see.
Punch the rest of your name on the list.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't punch the button. Oh, your eyesight's failing.
I thought you trained her. Sorry.
Yeah, try training me.
This is my last meeting.
All right. Okay. Wait.
Councilor Horwath.
I let him think so. Anyway, did you say that already for this year, 2023 to '24, you've hired 61, filled 61 positions? So last year, there were 64 total new full-time positions hired. Already by March, you've hired 61 in this year.
Correct.
Great question.
Is it button-worthy?
Thank you. That is all.
All right. Any other questions?
My God.
I guess I would add.
God!
Councilor Lester?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have all the resources you need to deal with this large number of applications that you're having to process and screenings and positions to fill?
Yeah, and we have also gained efficiencies in our process. We implemented a automated application and tracking system, which has helped us out. We've brought on part-time resources in HR who have continued to assist us in working on and finding more efficient recruitment strategies and methods. And, you know, just generally, the team has been working hard and quickly filling positions. So the other thing is that although we've filled about three times the number of positions, we've actually have the recruitment time to fill, so it's been cut in half. So just the team being creative, working collaboratively with our departments, and then also implementing some automation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What else we got?
That's it for me.
That's it?
Thank you.
Our hiring policy is you'll do. What's next?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Politan, members of the city council. Thank you for accommodating me in the front row here. Is that too loud?
Go ahead. Good. You're good.
See what you look like. Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. Just kicking it off with a few accomplishments, a number of public art projects, working with Leadership Manhattan Beach at the Manhattan Beach Arts Center, the community mural, as well as the Rainbow Crosswalk at the pier and Rainbow gazebo at Polywog Park. Six new pickleball courts, been really well received. We just received a award of excellence from California Parks and Recreation Society from that collaborative project. And the Acquatic Survey, we're moving forward with that with council direction to create an RFP that was just launched yesterday, so hopefully we'll have some great submittals. And we can move on to the work plan items. So beginning with updating the city donation policy. So the existing donation policy and programs have been placed on hold. Staff is working with the commission to develop a number of options for a creation of a 501(c)(3) or nonprofit. We plan to bring that for council's consideration in May of this year. We'll also be returning, along with that, donation policy with options for the military wall at Veterans Memorial. Then moving on to the next item, this is one that we do suggest moving to the department work plan. This is something that we continuously look at. It's been challenging to find just really a simple user interface for reservations. It's something we continue to look at. Fortunately, ActiveNet, which is our software platform, has launched an app, which is wonderful in terms of communicating with parents, even posting some photos. Unfortunately, it does not have that reservation functionality this time, but we're hoping different iterations throughout the year, we'll continue to monitor it, and hopefully we will have that ability moving forward. But again, we'll, if, if council chooses to move it to department work plan, we'll continue to actively find a good solution for this. The public art program, which I know we're changing the language here, is really, city council gave direction to the Culture Arts Commission, as you're aware, moving forward with an RFP, which I know they're going to be talking about on Monday's commission meeting to move forward the utility boxes, the mural, Sculpture Garden, Velze Plaque, and a number of public art projects, and they are proactively seeking for city council consideration. Of course, the assessment of historical artifacts, exciting, moving forward with completion of Phase One and Two, the policy development and inventory, Phase Three and Four, the process and cataloging and digitization. And then, of course, the conceptual design of that multifunctional library and museum building. The next three items are ones that staff would recommend moving to the CIP. Those would be the Digital Wall, the Fitness Court, and the Polywog Park play equipment. And then the last item, and this was placed on hold, and so staff had done an initial stab at creating an entire assessment of all of the public art within the city. And we have shared that with RLA, who is an expert in maintenance of public art. And so we are waiting, we will bring this back for city council consideration and see, you know, what that dollar amount would be to either, you know, they would assess, potentially maintain, or even decommission. I know the mayor may want to decommission one piece of public art. But again, they would give us a comprehensive look at all of our public art within the That wraps up the work plans, and as George had mentioned earlier, I know we have a number, we have 15 department and 20 overall commission items, and I know there's a lot of overlap in those, but we continue to diligently move forward on those as well.
We've got some questions, but first, is anyone opposed to moving the Digital Wall, the Fitness Court, and the play equipment to the CIP?
Nope.
Okay. And when's the Polywog going to be done?
Hope Director Lee can.
Now that it's moved to CIP.
Before my kids go to college?
That's my answer. Now, we were hoping for March before we had all the real rainy weather that we've encountered. The current rains are not helping. I can get updates to the council hopefully by next week. I think April's probably aggressive at this point, so I would, I would assume April or May, but I can definitely get something through Boos back out to you.
Okay. Thanks.
While you're still there.
Hold on.
Director Lee?
Questions?
Thank you.
Councilor, Mayor, Department of Government.
Thank you. While you're still there, the Digital Wall, since it's going to Public Works Review, is that your April/May timeline for the Digital Wall as well, or farther down the road?
The Digital Wall will be farther down the road. We have an RFP on the street right now. No, I take that back. It's closed. We're bringing a contract back to the council to consider, I believe, in April, and that's going to be a whole host of design services relating to not only the Digital Wall, but some facility renovations that we're doing. And the Digital Wall will be the top priority coming out of that process. And I anticipate by May, we've got a timeline for actually getting to the Digital Wall. And so there's definitely some engineering that has to happen. It's not, plug-and-play is just getting four monitors on that wall, but, but we're making progress at this point.
Okay. Second question to Director Lehman. Mark, on the art, I'm sorry, update city donation policy. Have you been asked before, a resident asked me today, was the city have a plan in place to accept art pieces, like private art? Someone says they want to donate, whether it's a painting or a sculpture, and their family donate to the city. Have you considered an actual private donation art policy?
Yes, and that has been an ongoing discussion because I know that, they do have a provision within the Public Art Master Plan, which was a number of years ago, and I know we need to update that language, and that should be tied in directly to the donation policy. So absolutely, we will bring that back and incorporate it into the donation policy.
Perfect. Thank you. Nothing further, your honor.
Okay. Councilor Lester?
I also have a question about the city donation policy. Let me just confirm what I think I heard you said, that it is coming back in May?
Correct.
And the scope of it will include what?
Primarily focusing on a nonprofit and, and a kind of a central donation concept. So if I'm donating for a bench or a pool, there's an opportunity to, to provide those opportunities through a 501(c)(3) or a nonprofit.
Okay. Over the last few weeks, I've met with members of the senior advisory committee, I was with them today, and then also members of the Park and Record Commission and others, who've indicated that the city is missing out on a number of prospective donations, people in their estate planning. And other, others have wanted to give money to the city for different projects that they believed in, that the city wants already to pursue. And I just wanted to make sure that that's captured in this, and I was asked specifically, when is this coming back? Because as you indicated, this is all on hold right now, correct?
Correct. Yes, and we are actively working with a number of, you know, excellent commissioners that have a lot of background and expertise in this area, and we're developing that. And again, we'll be bringing that back in May.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Horwath?
Yeah, and just to amplify that or add to it, it is so common for a city to have, like, some sort of community foundation to accept donations, right? And all over the state and probably the nation, they do it. So I hope that we can have a robust kind of format or policy so that as people, you know, it could be as small as a bench or, you know, a plaque on a wall or something bigger. So I, I really want to see that come forward.
Or a bequest.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Franklin?
Yes. Parks and Rec Director Lehman, the reservation system, I haven't been on it for a while, but how is it going? I mean, are people able, I mean, there was a lot of frustration with this, even as recently as a year ago. So is it the same? Is it things, something's been done?
I would say there has been continuous improvements. I mean, we've been piloting a lot of their programs, you know, really nationally, and so we have a lot of in-house expertise, and so we're able to work with them. And that being said, there's not a great software platform that we've found. It's hard to do a one-size-fits-all without having your own in-house IT, you know, literally tailoring it for what you'd like to do. We've actually met with local software developers and said, this is the model that we would like to see, to make it easy for a user interface to reserve, again, a court or a field on the fly. It doesn't seem complicated, but apparently, I'm sure Director Halclan could speak to this, it actually is and takes a lot of time and effort and money. You know, again, that all being said, I think ActiveNet is really the best solution for us that we've found comparing, you know, two alternatives. And again, I think with the launch of the app, I'm hopeful and optimistic, but again, we don't want to be an early adopter if they haven't perfected that app. And again, hopefully, they'll have that reservation solution. Realistically, it'll probably be a year.
And, and did I hear you say that about ActiveNet, that they don't have a reservation?
Yes, they, they do, but it, correct, making it app and making it really user-friendly.
Oh, okay.
I think we're so accustomed to having ease with our reservations. Literally, if you, you know, a local fitness studio, you can click and reserve your spot in a class, and it, and it's not that intuitive. It's not as clean an interface as we like it to be.
Mm-hmm.
It's a bit cumbersome.
Okay.
Thank you.
So anybody with a kid that codes out there, here's your opportunity. I don't understand why RESI or OpenTable just doesn't say, okay, we're going to make a solution for government. There's a lack of reservation software for government, so someone could make some money out there.
And they could serve appetizers.
They could serve appetizers. All right. Next up.
Soda machines, or, I'm sorry, healthy drink machines.
Are there, are there questions for Parks and Rec, or anything else from Parks and Rec?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Christian Eichenlaut, Police Captain, Manhattan Beach Police Department, here to present the work plan on behalf of Chief Johnson. Rather than go down the list, I'll just highlight a few of our accomplishments, most notably under hiring. Within this last year, we've hired 12 new employees, which has really paved the way for us to make promotions internally at the department, which we've done eight of. HR's been extremely helpful with us. It's been a team effort, so it's a continued effort, and if you know anyone, we're hiring. And I'll just touch on number four. We developed our strategic plan for '23-'24. It was quite a process. We pooled members from the community through our committees. We solicited input from them. Internally at the department, we pooled everybody, solicited all levels to get input to make it as good of a plan as we could. So we're proud of what we have, and the chief will be in the near future presenting it at a council meeting, most likely in May, so you'll hear more about that. Next slide, please. Under our current work plan items, we're currently working on a radio antenna improvement program at the department, basically just to improve our reception at the lower level of the department. There are certain areas that are hit or miss, so this will improve that program. We're about done with that. We've also completed our records management system, and we're awaiting the second part of that, which should be finalized by the end of this year, and it's our computer-aided dispatch program. We've finished our 2019-20 strategic plan, which, due to COVID, was extended another two years, so we're done with that, and we've implemented that as well. There is no next. Okay. Any questions?
Councilor Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you said that you, you know, with regards to the 2023-24 strategic plan, that you sought input from members of the community, and then you said through our committees, can you tell me what that means?
So I misspoke there. We didn't actually have committees, but we held a community forum where members of the community were invited to attend, and they did. We solicited input from them, so my, my air there.
That's okay. I mean, but it, so it was open to the public. It wasn't just like selected, like, just the Neighborhood Watch Group or just the, the Police Academy. It was, it was a public forum.
Yeah, it was, it was an open invite.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Franklin?
I messed up.
Ready for effort?
There we go. There we go.
Councilor Franklin?
Yes, thank you. So Captain Eichenlaut, I've noticed that trailer that has a whole lot of stuff on it. And I've been, you know, you see that, you know, I've seen it in El Porto and I've seen it in, you know, the Upper Pier lot. So is that, is that a trial? Is it, do you need more of them? Is there, how do we integrate with it?
Are we referring to the automatic license plate reader or our camera system?
No, it's actually on a trailer and it's got a pole on it.
With a blue light on the back, right?
You know, if I may, I can call upon someone who's probably got more info on that than I do.
Because it looks very interesting.
Good evening, council members. Kelly Benjamin, Lieutenant at the Manhattan Beach Police Department. That is actually a trailer that is portable. It is part of a leasing program. It's not an Alpers, but it does allow us as a police department to target high crime hit areas and try to impact and prevent some of those crimes from occurring.
What does it have? I mean, can I?
In what way?
It has multiple cameras. And then I think what Councilmember Franklin is referring to is a rather obnoxious flashing light. So it alerts hopefully the criminals that it's out there and they see it and they see that it's very obviously a camera system and they choose not to commit the crimes.
And you can also speak through it, right? Isn't there a?
Yes, there is a loudspeaker. So if we happen to be monitoring at that time, that is an option with that trailer.
And without revealing a strategy or whatever, I mean, are you trying it out? Is it going to be incorporated, you know, in more places?
For this fiscal year, we are, we have, it's a lease program. So we have leased this trailer for this fiscal year. And I believe it's maybe one of the action items for the budget moving forward if we are happy with what the trailer does provide us.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery. Oh, hold on. We still have more questions?
Senator Benjamin, I'm sorry. One more question for you. Flashback for a second in COVID in the lot, parking lot across the street from Shellback. We had issues there. If we'd had this trailer back then, you would have deployed it in the same place that you see it now, the one with the light on top and the camera. If we'd had it back in COVID, we could have dropped it at that lot across the Shellback. It's the same thing we're doing now. It's a mobile trailer, moves all around the city. Would have helped us back in 2020, we'd have this, correct? We'd have the same trailer today that we're leasing, we could have used it back in 2020 at that same exact location.
We could have yelled at people to put their masks on.
Yes.
Stay off the beach.
In that car.
Pick up your trash.
Issues that we had back in 2020, you know what I'm talking about. We had issues at the same lot, same location back then.
Absolutely. The purpose of this trailer was to help us with a lot of these community problems and other crime, crime issues that we are seeing. So any tool that we have helps us be more effective as a police department here in the city.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Before I move on, on that list, item one, the radio replacement project and the CAD system are recommended to be moved to the department work plan. Those are internal type projects in staff's estimation.
No objection from me. Anyone object?
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Sorry, let me click it. Just that City Manager, the reason I asked that, City Manager, Lieutenant Benjamin, was I want to add that item as a lease to a purchase. That item we're talking about, that mobile unit? She said the word lease and I thought we owned it?
Yeah, we actually started out looking to purchase it, but apparently you can only lease it at this point. So one is included in next year's draft budget at this point to lease.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tried.
Next up? Fire.
Don't yell fire in a council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mike Ling, your fire chief. There we go. So I'm proud to recommend or talk about our accomplishments this evening. So this year, we've done a ton of movement. We've, we're able to hire a civilian fire marshal. We're in the process of hiring that civilian fire inspector. So it should be on by hopefully April 1st. And through those two hires, we'll be able to really revamp our fire prevention bureau, really get on board with our annual inspections. And proud to say we're on slight, can finally complete them 100% this year. And other things we're going to do. And so traditionally, we've been contracting out for our, our building, our fire plan spec, plan inspections. And currently, we brought in about 33%. By this time next year, we'll bring that in 100%. So what that does, it actually brings the cost recovery back into the city. And it also gives our contractors or public face to call directly versus calling a third party. So that's some huge movement we've had in the fire department there. Excuse me. We've also been able to hire two division chiefs, one on open recruitment and one internal recruitment, which is big for us because it starts that succession planning, which we're going for. And also out of that, hire three internal captains and three internal engineer promotions. Again, so this is huge for us as a small department, training within, creating a succession plan and building that morale from within. And hopefully whoever's standing in this spot one day will be an internal chief fire chief. So that's some of our big, well, something else is not on there that I forgot to mention is our emergency preparedness administrator. Huge hire for the city. She's, I'm sure you've gotten emails from her. She's on the ball, out seeking grant money with the storms. We're dealing with, she's on the forefront of that. So a big, big pickup and a big asset to our department as well as the city, so.
Did you have a question about that?
No, no, I'll wait till you say it. Thank you.
And for fire department, we only have a couple current work plans. Both these have been on there for a while. And I'm happy to say that hopefully by into this quarter, we'll have these off there. So one of them is our current upgrade with additionally with the PD is our CAD with RCC. So we're, keep our fingers crossed, we're slated to be finished in end of April. So that'll be, we'll be switching over to that new CAD system. And then our emergency notification, which is our Alert South Bay, that will be anytime soon. That's at, it's going to be absorbed by Area G. So it'll be contracted with the Area G. So it was always looking for a landing spot and it finally it's got a landing spot. And the city managers are going to be voting on that moment really soon about that. So these will both come off the work plan here momentarily. I think we're recommending moving those over just to department.
I was going to say, yeah. Any objection to moving these to the department work plan?
No.
I have a question about the emergency notification. So I'll ask it after my colleagues, you know, my turn.
Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, the residents saw the information about the emergency operations hire, which is great news. So thanks for including her in here. The second, your new station, which will soon be finished according to Director Lee in what, May, June this year?
I think that's pushed back to August at this time. With the rain delays and supply chain. But if you see, there's, they've gotten pretty good progress. Get the roof on now. They're starting to wrap the building. They're doing a lot of interior work. So I think they move back to August 7th, I believe. Is that something right?
That still works for me. Now, the last thing is the, people see the promotions of the three captains, three engineers. The first question they always say is, now that you're losing six, and I go, I'm not losing six, we're gaining three, moving up three. They think we're going to hire three. But I go, trust me, any spot that opens up, we advertise to fill those spots behind them. We're not leaving it vacant. It's not an open position. They just advertise and backfill behind them. So that's your intention, is to fill those slots. We're not going to keep it open. We fill them up as needed, whether it's retirement, injuries or vacancies due to promotion. We backfill.
100%. We currently do have one firefighter paramedic in backgrounds. And we currently, and we exhausted that list. So we currently are opening, I think as of today, actually, we opened a lateral firefighter medic. It'll be continuous recruitment. So we can continue, instead of waiting for a group, we can continuously interview and hire as we needed. So we'll have two more to fill right away. Again, and then with succession planning and looking forward ahead, we have a possible retirement in August. So we'll be able to fill that ahead because of what you authorized me to do earlier this year with the over hire. So as soon as that person puts his time in, I can get them trained. And so they're ready to hit the floor by that person's retirement date. So it gives me time to plan ahead and be ahead of the ball.
Perfect. Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Councilor Horwath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the emergency notification system, and so you say it's being absorbed into the Area G Alert South Bay?
So Alert South Bay is who the South Bay cities use. And it was always kind of, it was a new program, which cities all bought into. But the funding mechanism and how the cities were going to pay for that, it never really had a landing spot. So there's many times it tossed around how it was going to be paid. It was going to be a nonprofit at one time. And amongst all the city managers and the fire chiefs and the police chiefs and so on, the final landing spot and the best place for it is to land under the Area G umbrella.
Okay, so that's a funding source for it.
So the cities will contract, or will pay Area G, which the person for Alert South Bay will work for them. So, and somebody in police and fire, as well as our communications within the city manager's office has access at any time to make a notification. And then PD also has their NICSIL system, which is another secondary alerting system.
Okay. So PD doesn't use the same, they go through NICSILs or do that?
They have the capabilities using Alert South Bay as well.
Okay. I mean, I think it'd be, and I don't know, you know, but I think for residents' ease, it would be nice to have it one thing, right? Because it's sometimes kind of like, oh, I signed up for this. I think I signed up for NICSIL. I'm not sure if I'm signed up for that. Also, I know that in Hermosa Beach, so their fire department's county, and they, there's an app that allows residents to, if they hear a siren, they can, you know, go into it, type in their area code. And it's, you know, because the LA County, excuse me, Fire Department is part of this app, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it.
It's Pulse Point.
It is Pulse Point.
We're, we have that as well.
We do? So, because when I, when I tried to sign up, it said you're not in the.
It might not be specific because we dispatch through RCC. So look up South Bay or RCC and it'll, it gives you the option to opt in to.
Okay, because this is, this is one, the reason I bring it up, so it's Pulse Point, everybody. Sometimes, you know, you see these things on Nextdoor. Does anybody know what those sirens are? Does anybody know?
Nextdoor.
I know. What's Nextdoor? God love you for that. I'll definitely vote for you for mayor. Oh, sorry. No, but you know what I mean? Like it's, and people text me, oh, what's going on? It's like, okay, they'll let you know when they can't, but this, it might help some of those people who want to know right away what's going on to go to it. So thank you for that. I didn't know if we had access to that.
We do have access to it. And Pulse Point, it actually is an app that you can get. And if, it's specifically for, if you're CPR trained, is what it does with, it geofences you to where you're at. And if somebody needs CPR, somebody calls an ambulance specifically for CPR, it lets you know, it beeps your phone. But it also, one of the secondary features that people use for is that you can find out what's going on here, because you get, you can see what calls are going out, so.
Appreciate that information. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Leser.
Two points. Chief, I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to discuss this with you ahead of time, but I'm just wondering if we might want to consider a work plan item related to an assessment of our seismic resiliency. And the reason for it is reading about how, what we all recently observed in the last month in Turkey and Syria, we are every bit as vulnerable to that scale of a quake. Five, six, seven years ago, our city had partnered with the Lucy Jones Center, which looked at multiple ways that we could ensure that our city was responsive or had the capacity to sort of respond to a quake. But what I'm contemplating is maybe identifying through staff where our vulnerabilities are and what we might need to do. This is not something immediate, but maybe something that staff could work on. It certainly involves perhaps just a confirmation what our building codes are and if there needs to be any strengthening of them. Two, the emergency response system that we have in place, we rely a lot on our CERT group, but also we have this new position, this new individual in place to help. But I'm just wondering, might that be something we might want to consider?
Sure. That I'd be, I think it'd be a partnership with our community development, with the building department in that aspect. But as far as resilience with the fire department and our CERT program, and we're actually also starting a Map Your Neighborhood.
Correct.
And in partnership with PD's.
Let me ask you this. Is there a need for this as a work plan item, just for my colleagues and me to talk about? Because it's our decision, not necessarily the chief.
I'd say admittedly, I would be reluctant to support this right now. It's one of those things that's nice when we have the time, but I mean, we've waited and we had to wait some time just to get the discussion of outdoor dying decks because we had to hire someone to do it. I mean, this is a big undertaking.
Big step.
And you would, you would have to, I could see we'd have to engage either consultants or additional staff to do it. You know, I think it's, we can encourage homeowners, but I don't know that the city needs to take on an assessment that they can do themselves. And in fact, there's a number of places that do earthquake retrofitting. It's an expense. They can also buy earthquake insurance. I just don't know that, you know, given our limited resources and all the things that are on the plate of community development especially, that now is the time for that.
Respect that. Second point is just simply a thank you, Chief. I think you've shown some real leadership in that department. And someone who was off council for four years and now back, I just want to thank you for the stability you're bringing to that department.
Thank you.
Okay. We got Councilor Franklin?
Yeah, so just to follow up for a question, is it for city buildings or is it for residences or both?
Be both, but certainly city buildings at a minimum.
Okay, because, because I just went through, you know, re-upping my earthquake insurance for my home. I had done some retrofitting, you know, in years past. So I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe Neighborhood Watch or somebody like that can get a, you know, an inventory of homes that have had some retrofit? I mean, just to get it started, to get some sort of inventory.
If I can respond, I'd simply say I respect what the mayor has had to say in terms of the time that's involved in doing this sort of assessment that I have mine, which is broader than just retrofits.
We can hear from community development, they come up. They can.
Thank you.
Fill in some blanks for us. Mayor Pro Tim Montgomery?
I'll pass. I'll wait for ComDeb as well.
Okay. Anything else for fire? Okay. Thank you. So our community development anyway. All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I will start by highlighting some of the accomplishments across the various divisions.
Appreciate that, but just for continuation, that lacks conversation. I mean, would that be a minor undertaking, a major one? Can we do that now? Even if we wanted to?
It would be a fairly major undertaking. I have been part of the process before, the previous jurisdiction I worked in. And we would have to start with an assessment of what percentage of the structures are in need of seismic retrofitting. And then we would have to go after some grant funding to be able to potentially subsidize would have to go after some grant funding to be able to potentially subsidize it if in fact the city wanted to require property owners to come forward and seismic, go ahead and retrofit their properties. So if you are going to require it, then we have to find some funding sources to be able to help with that effort. And so in that sense, it is a fairly large undertaking. But I will say that all new construction, of course, follows California Building Code. And California Building Code already takes into account the structural engineering that's required to be able to sustain, I believe it's 9.0, but I can verify that number, earthquakes. And so all our new buildings are already built to be able to withstand that. But we can look further into the seismic retrofitting for older buildings and get back to the council with some options.
So from what year? I don't know, have those requirements been in there? You know, you say new buildings, but like from what year is it from?
Well, the most recent code that we adopted was the 2022, but California Building Code historically has included it. It's just become more stringent over the years. So it, let's say several years ago, the code was constructed so that you would, your building would have to withstand a 7.0, then it became 8.0, now it's 9.0. And don't quote me on those numbers, but I'm just giving you examples of how it's become more stringent over the years.
Do we have some sort of guess of like half of our housing stock or half of our?
I don't at this moment.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on that? Okay, moving on.
Okay. Moving on to our accomplishments across our various divisions in our department, I would just like to highlight that we, again, adopted the 2022 building code. We oversaw construction activity that included over 1,300 building permits and over 9,000 inspections. We completed our second historic landmark designation in the city. We adopted the six-cycle housing element, which you all know was a huge feat, and completed the citywide engineering and traffic survey to set speed limits. Thank you. Our current work plan items, I'll start with the modernizing parking standards. This is an action item that derived from the Sepulveda Corridor Initiative. The council requested that staff conduct a comparison of current industry standards in regard to parking requirements and how that compares to our code. So staff ventured out into this effort and the planning staff has been working alongside traffic engineering staff to update the entire parking code and is at a point now, after many, many months of laboring over this, where we feel we are going to be ready to present in draft form, something for the, the community to consume. And that would be via study sessions with the PPIC and the Planning Commission, where we would present this draft and we would open it to the public and, and hope, again, initiate conversations with coastal as well simultaneously as it would affect the coastal zone. And so we, once we have feedback from all the different parties, we would then take that forward to the Planning Commission for an official consideration and then bring that forward to the council. So the next step is, is the series of community meetings with the Planning Commission and the PPIC. The next item, the next two items actually are the items that we are, we're going to propose moving to the departmental work plan. The first is the Environmental Sustainability Work Plan, and these are ongoing, this is ongoing oversight and implementation of council-approved programs, including the Dune Restoration, the Manhattan Beach Green Business Program, and the, the pollution, plastics pollution policies. The second, the Climate Ready MB, this is mostly driven by state mandates. This is the analyses of Sea Level Rise as well as climate change. And that information gets incorporated into the city's climate action and adaptation plan, pardon me. And we are also required to adopt the Local Hazards Mitigation Plan. So we're currently working on those efforts and they're ongoing. And if the council is inclined, we would move those two to our department work plans. We then have the Housing Policy and Regulation Updates, which also stems from several state mandates and legislation changes. The, the department, as I mentioned earlier, did adopt or bring forward to the council adoption of the six-cycle housing element. And now we are tasked with implementing those programs and policies alongside several other updates that we have to make to our housing regulations. We're working on an SB9 ordinance, the formal one. We have to make continuous changes to ADU, like, ADU regulations in the city as we keep getting new rules coming down to us from the state. The next item is the Long-Term Outdoor Dining and Business Uses. This is our newest adventure. And we have some council items, actions coming forward fairly soon on this, starting in April. On this effort, we are attempting to evaluate the pros and cons of, of making permanent the outdoor dining that we were able to experience during COVID and come up with some alternatives and policies that would help implement this effort. The RFP, for our consultant to help us get this going, was released late last week. And within a few, within a few weeks, we'll be able to better understand what, what our scope is looking like over the course of the next year. And the last is the Historic Preservation Ordinance Cleanup. This stemmed from a conversation last year where we realized that the codified version of our Historic Preservation Code didn't necessarily align with the council's intent during adoption back in 2016. And so we are revisiting that and going ahead with some amendments to that code to better align with council's intent.
So just a question, where is this list? Because I'm not seeing it written as it's written here, the department work plans or the commission work plans. It's kind of a combination of the commission and department work plan.
No, in the, in the staff report.
Oh, in the staff report, because...
More verbiage.
Yeah, because I'm looking at page 77 of 110. That's department work plans.
These are...
Commission work plans, and they're trying to combine the two.
These are the commission work plans. Sorry, not the commission work plans. This is the council work plan. Commission work plan, there is a lot of overlap and that might be causing some of the confusion.
Yeah. The council, I mean, there are no commission work plans.
Yeah, there are.
There's, there's council-approved work plans for commissions.
Correct. And there's a lot of overlap with that and the council, the council work plan list.
There's ours, basically. Somehow we should combine those, I feel.
Yeah, actually, I think our approach has been to put the commission work plans under the department work plans, because it seems as though staff is really more involved with executing those work plans with the commissions.
I've got no doubt, but, you know, we have, I would say, sometimes revisited things and said, no, we're not interested in commission and doing that anymore. Again, to me, it's, I would combine the commission work plans with the council work plans. That would be my suggestion, so that we can track progress and what they're doing as well, because rather than just, we meet once a year and say, yeah, that sounds good, until we don't like something that is done.
Yeah, or we just report back more frequently on the commission work plans. But it's up to the council's desire here. If you want it to be incorporated as part of the council work plan, we can certainly do that.
Are we adopting this tonight or is it something we can think about?
We're not. We're coming, we're going to come back, I think, in May.
Okay, then I would just ask staff to, to take a look at that and see if that makes sense or not. So that, you know, we all keep track and there's not, the overall, there shouldn't be that much overlap either. You know, council, commission should be the same. Mayor Portimao, Governor?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Directors, I assume you're through so far? You're okay right now? No others? Okay, great. Two questions. I know that people are concerned about the impact of the city on SB9. Has that actually had any requests to our city for SB9 yet?
We've received inquiries, but we've received no applications. And in fact, I've learned that across the state, there have been very few applications for SB9.
So good news. Nobody's actually applied under SB9. How about the Historic Preservation Ordinance? In the last year, anyone applied?
1505 Crest was one that was designated by the council over the last year. And we've had one recent inquiry. Other than that, nothing.
Perfect. Thank you. Nothing further, Anna. Councilor Franklin?
Yes, hi. Thank you. So, did you mention in the long-term dining, outdoor dining task force, did you mention a consultant? That we're, got a consultant going and can you just refresh my memory? Like, what are the parameters?
Sure.
What is that consultant going to be doing?
It's actually a broad spectrum. And so we don't have a consultant yet. We released the RFP last week. We're seeking consultants to, and likely that main consultant is going to require some subconsultants, as we are asking for services related to engineering and design, financial analysis, SEQA, and parking analysis. And so those four areas of expertise is what we're really looking for from our consultant. And it is expected that that consultant would also help us with the community engagement portion of the work effort.
And then the senior, our, our senior planner is going to be in there?
Yes, that's the project manager.
Overseeing the whole thing. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Horwath?
Number one, I guess I would say, I believe that you asked for items two and three, the Environmental Sustainability Work Plan and Climate Ready MB to go back into the department work plan?
Correct.
So I would be in favor of that.
Yes.
Any objections?
But also to what the mayor was saying before, I, I, it's not just like the, is there a difference between council and commission work plans? Like, I, I will say that when we had that meeting and the commissions would come and say, these are our work plans, I found it to be a bit cumbersome because it looked like they were presenting this to us and we weren't actually giving our input on, and go and do this. So I, I think there's a little bit of a process, slight tweak, that maybe could go on for that next year, maybe. That's my gut. But also, to what you were saying, it is a little confusing, right? It's just a little confusing. And having it in one place, like the, the PowerPoint is actually easier to look through than some of the other things, but then it doesn't have all the stuff on it. So, but I understand the purpose of it because you want us, I think, to understand the capacity. You want us to understand, this is what we're all working on. So, you know, the council work plan should be all the thing, in my opinion, should be the things that we kind of want to see get done, right? That we kind of want to, and we want to prioritize. And, but we have to also see what each department is currently working on before we decide we can add things to it. So I, it was a little, the whole thing was a little cumbersome to me and I don't, it was just hard to kind of track and follow. So what should we be doing? You know, when you say, put, put this now into the department work plan, it's like, what difference does it make? Like, you're still, you're doing the work no matter what, right? So what, what's the point of doing it? I mean, I'm happy to do it. Am I making any sense to anyone?
You did.
Oh, thank you. High praise.
Three minutes in. But, no. No, I, I think you're on to something. And that's why I brought it up as well, where it's just, you know, I don't want to make a council list of 100 items. I think the, the issue with the work plan items for, for staff is that these are ongoing things for the most part, or internal to the, in the aspect that they are not something that council needs to direct or approve. Our approval comes through budget time. They're not something, an initiative that council wants to take on. The, I see the commissions as differently, though. The commissions are an extension of council's work plan and, and the approval of their work plans. So there, there shouldn't be too much difference between them. And maybe we just, there's some sort of flow chart where it's council work plan and then commissions right there. This is what council has approved for commissions next to it. And then there's the staff work plans that are internal to them, that, you know, again, we don't need to know micromanagers that we are, every little thing, until we're, we ask about it.
I mean, it is helpful to see if I may just take on.
I'll go ahead.
It is helpful. It's incredibly helpful. And it's important for us to understand everything they're doing, right? I mean, and it's important for the public to understand. It's important for us to understand that these things are in process. So I'm not saying this is not useful information. I just, you know.
No, it is important and it's, it's useful for us. And this, and that's why I kind of want to consolidate, because I know how busy all the departments are. I think all my colleagues are aware, but sometimes we forget, you know, because there's this shiny new thing, or, or there's, you know, an uprising, a community wants to see this, that, or the other. And we say, yes, we need to react right away. But then, you know, that, where does that fit in with the list of 100 other things that, at that time, when we put it on the plan, that was, we wanted immediate. Outdoor dining is a perfect example of that. You know, we, we all wanted it to move quickly, but between the six-cycle housing element, between zoning, between a half dozen other major projects we got, verandas and everything else, you know, you couldn't just, everything can't be at the top of the list. So it helps for council to see these lists and say, okay, wait a minute. Community Development's got a lot of stuff going. So while this new initiative might be great, earthquake, you know, preparedness, whatever it might be, looking at everything else in context, you know, they don't have the time or the bandwidth to do it right now. So in that way, it helps us.
And I just, just wanted to say, this is not just directed at you.
No, it's not.
So, so you're standing there and, but just overall, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Community Development?
That's it for us.
All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. We've got lots of accomplishments at Public Works that we're very proud of. Just a couple highlights. Director Schreliant already mentioned our advanced metering infrastructure project that we completed last year. Very excited about that. The other one I want to point your attention to is number three. In 2022, we pumped 419 acre feet of groundwater from the city's wells. We are well on our way, no pun intended, to get, using all of our full water rights. And while we might not get there this fiscal year, we are definitely planning to get there next fiscal year. And we are networking with other jurisdictions in the basin and looking forward to exploring future water rights that might be available for lease. And so I guess my point is, is that we are back in the water business and we're excited about that.
Great.
As it relates to the council work plans that we have, there are three on the list. The first one is downtown and north end beautification. We came back to the council in the fall and you gave us direction on how to spend the $525,000 that were allocated this fiscal year. We have a plan. We've got two contracts that are coming back to the council in May for consideration for doing expansion of our Big Belly program for the trash cans and then also enhanced landscaping. And so we're excited about that. The next one here is the senior and scout house project, including Jocelyn Center Facade. Council gave us clear direction at the last meeting and we are definitely moving forward on that. And the last one on this list is Uniform Citywide Wayfinding Sign Program Phase One Implementation. And so this is something that's been on the work plan for quite a while now. We've got an update for the council coming on May 2. And so I want to check in with the council on what staff has found and make sure that we've got some very clear direction before we go out to bid and start implementing this program.
Especially after that nasty email we got.
And so what we're recommending here is that item two, the senior scout house and the Uniform Citywide Wayfinding, since they're both provided for in a capital improvement plan, that those move to the CIP plan.
Any objection to that?
Well, wouldn't we still get, but it's still going to come back to us, you said, May 2 on the Uniform?
It's not changing process. It's, it's just taking it off the list of future.
Okay, no objection to that. Okay. What else?
Those are the, the three projects we have on, on your work plan. We've got 150 more projects that we have, that we're working on and looking forward to bring those back to you as well.
I was going to load you up then. I have three items. Okay. Okay, so that's it for Public Works?
It is.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, question. Councilor Lesser?
Questions in comment with my communication with the colleagues. Well, first is, one of the questions that you asked, Mr. Mayor, during our discussion of outdoor dining was parking meters. And particularly if we're anticipating, trying to get some form of outdoor dining in the public right away, how the parking meters and their stands get in the way. And you had mentioned how many other jurisdictions have removed the parking meters and have some form of mobile app.
Kiosk.
Kiosk or something else. And I'm just wondering, is that something that should go on a work plan? Or how would you propose it, given that we know how busy Public Works is? On the other hand, this is obviously something that would be great for Public Works to come back and report on with regard to the capability, what might be involved in that, what's the scope, what are we looking at?
You could probably take one of two approaches. One is to throw it to the downtown outdoor dining as one of the solutions there. Or, you know, if council wants to implement sooner, not just to free up space on the sidewalk for anyone who wants to participate in the sidewalk dining in the interim of any permanent outside dining or solutions, because since we don't know what those look like, you could do it sooner rather than later. I don't know. I mean, between RFP and everything else, it would still probably take a year, but.
The reason I'm thinking about it here is the outdoor dining working group is going to have enough work as it is. And if this is something which perhaps we want to independently pursue, it might be a good idea to at least set it up.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. But let's see what colleagues say. Councilor Franklin, anything on this? Or you had something?
Oh, no, something else.
Something else. Okay. So to Councilor Lesser's point, is this something we want to pursue separately than the downtown decks?
Wouldn't it go through PPIC?
It could.
It could. We just need to get it going, is what my thought is.
It needs to, we need some direction here if we want to.
It's interesting, because I, originally, when you started bringing it up, I was in my head like, well, no, that's going to be part of that process. But I, I don't think it would get in the way to remove them. I, so I would be in favor of, of moving it, whether it's through the PPIC or whatever, like making it, bifurcating it.
I'm in favor too.
Any comment from Public Works Director?
So I would say that the points are very well taken, and this is work that we are already starting to explore already. And, yeah, I think that it's not as simple as just getting rid of the single space meters. We want to have a solution that's appropriate for our business community and our residents, and talks with other systems that we either do have or might have down, a little down the road. And so whether the council places it on, it's work planned. And so whether the council places it on its work plan or not, this is something that internally in the department, we are going to be pursuing and we think that there's going to be, you know, a fair amount of outreach that's going to be necessary to really put up well.
And that's fine because frankly too, though, I, I think something needs to be done because we, I think in, inordinate amount of complaints these days.
Yes.
For how the current meters are, are working. Whether they're out of whack and everything else. The complaints have really risen.
So that was going to be my question. What's, what's our useful life like on the current meter heads?
I, I think many of the meter heads are past their useful life. Yeah, I, I would say that I think within the last two months, I don't think I've received any complaints about the meter heads. And so perhaps those are going to the council and not to the department. And I, I would hope that if you get these in the future, please send them to me so we can investigate them. We spend a lot of time with our contract vendor tuning those systems up. And so I, from my perspective, we've been actually reaping the benefits of that investment, at least that investment in time and interim. But, you know, to your point about useful life, we, we are approaching the end on a lot of that and, and that's why we're, we're trying to look at this holistically and not just try to find another meter to put there.
Mr. Mayor, so that would be my first point. I think there is.
Yeah, we're taking that as consensus.
The second point has to do with the wayfinding signage and I guess I direct this to my colleagues. And that is, just as our mayor has one regret of his past prior council service related to a public art project, I have one regret of my prior service and that has to do with the wayfinding signage. Just one. Maybe enough few others too. But it has to do with the color decision to just go with the white signs. It's a small little issue, but I'm just wondering, is this the form? Probably not. It's probably, you indicated in May, Public Works Director, that this item is coming back. We may be too far along because I recognize council sets and deliberations since Councilmember Hoerth and I were off council. But I am very much in favor of retaining our Manhattan Beach blue for our signage as opposed to the white. But I'm, this major lofty issue, I'm not sure what the proper form is to discuss it in. Any suggestion?
We had a public meeting on it when we approved the white.
Thanks a lot. Same list, that public art piece that the mayor loves so much?
That was, that was a redo.
Mayor, if I may, you know, some of the issues we've encountered with this project is when looking at the designs and trying to get that to implementation, we've had, we have some, some problems with that. And so we want to bring those problems to the council's attention. Not necessarily with color, but we, we are planning to come back with a, a full recap on where we're going with this before we actually pull the trigger and go out to bid.
That's fine.
Okay. And maybe that's the point for doing it. I'm obviously being a little facetious, but I'd welcome a further conversation of color.
Maybe I'll get my pink yet.
Get a shot. Okay. Well, Council, Mayor Portem Montgomery jumped to the top, but Councilmember Franklin was, had already started, so.
Yeah, so just a, a couple of quick questions while we have you there. Do residents get a portal with the, the metering infrastructure system?
They will. We have not rolled that out yet. Our, our finance department is, is going to be taking the lead on that as we switch to the utility billing system. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
So it, it is coming and, and once we're ready, there'll be a, a full press release on that.
Okay. Great. And then number 10 on your list of accomplishments, can you just describe what that is? The Neighborhood Maintenance Worker Program?
It warms my heart that you asked.
Was this a setup or something?
No.
Oh, my God.
I think I know what it is, but I just want to verify.
Did he owe you money or something? All right, go ahead.
So this is, this is something we're very proud of in Public Works and, you know, essentially what our field operations division has done is broken the city up into 17 different areas and we've assigned a maintenance worker to each one of those areas. And their job is to weekly, to make sure they're inspecting the area according to a specified checklist, to make sure that things are as they should be, that stop signs are not crooked, that potholes have been reported, that broken sprinklers are repaired, graffiti is removed and so on and so forth. And so we launched this program at the very, I think the very end of January. And since inception, we've got over 500 reports that have come in of, of routine maintenance work that our field staff have identified that need to be corrected. And so that type of volume is not sustainable for us to handle in the long run, but we think there's a lot of deferred upkeep that is being reported now. And it's also demonstrating our commitment to be proactive in the community and, and make sure that our, our staff is aware of our surroundings and not just going to that next job. Because, you know, as council know, we do have a lot going on, but we're carving out time to make sure that we're inspecting as well.
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking.
What a good question.
Mayor Portem Montgomery.
Thank you, Honorable. Nothing so much for Director Lee, I just comment to general, the PPIC definitely needs to hear any decisions before you start jerking out meter heads on any of our streets anywhere. There's a process there. Decided as you want to be about dying deck, we haven't selected a task force yet. So do the right way, the process, PPIC regarding meters. And before Director Lee got here, actually, we replaced it. I think 250 meter heads, Bruce, we replaced those. And some were bad, defective, the rest were good as far as using our readers and Apple Pay and whatever, they're working fine. To your point, Director Lee, that we are working fine with them. Then complaints, but I have not seen any recent complaints about that at all. What else was there? And that was the main two items. We're good.
Okay. Anything else from Public Works then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm probably, by the way, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Terry Hackelman. I'm the city's IT director. It's probably appropriate that I'm maybe the last department because one of the things that I always notice is I look at all these.
Hold on, my computer just crashed. All right. Go ahead.
Oh, we were just patching it. But is, as I, as I hear all the things the departments are doing, the one commonality that I as an IT guy see is all the technology. And so as you look at our accomplishments here, there's a lot that, that we could talk about in those accomplishments, but the one thing that I'm, I'm really proud of the IT department about is that the rapid expansion of use of technology by the departments very effectively and a lot of things that people don't see behind the scenes. And the complexity and the cybersecurity things that we have to deal with, that, that's really our, some of our biggest accomplishment is keeping the wheels on the car, making changes without bringing the network down, without bringing the systems down, which can be quite tricky for our staff. So you'll see some of our accomplishments here, but I think some of the, you know, as I got to thinking about it, the large accomplishments are all the things that are happening behind the scenes. So I won't belabor all these. I'm proud of these as well, but I did want to mention the behind the scenes work that we do there. So George? So we've got two work plan items that are, that are under IT, but these are very much citywide projects. You know, our job is to guide these projects, project manage them, get them implemented. The ERP system is, is a great success story for the city. The things that we have done over the last three years is from an automation impacting human resources, payroll, all components of finance, the purchasing roles. It's just quite something to see everything that's being used by the staff today and the amount of paper that we don't do and the automated processes that help move these, these kind of business processes along. That project is one of the last major phases that. You've heard Steve talk about the utility billing. That's going live and they're, we're working all day today, actually starting to generate those bills for this next cycle. So pretty exciting time that we do there. With that, we really only have two, really what I call more minor modules that we want to implement on that system. One is the business license and the other is a transparency module that will actually allow the public to be able to see more information on our website about the city's financial and what we're doing with our financial systems. So this is one of the projects that, that we're recommending that really go into an operational state because a lot of the work that we do today on the ERP system is continuing to implement new features and functions. These systems are incredibly robust. There's a lot of things that we can continue to do and we're on kind of that continuous path right now, working with the departments for that. But as a project, you know, we're, we're on budget with it and we've accomplished a tremendous amount with that. And that's, you know, really on the backs of the staff and a lot of the staff that did this implementation while they were still doing their day-to-day jobs. So my recommendation with that project, and I will be giving another update with that project here in a, in a couple of months, along with a, an amendment related to renewing our contract with that vendor. But I do think from a work plan standpoint, I, I feel pretty confident that we've really accomplished all the objectives that were outlined when we originally started that project. The second work plan item we have is the work order management. And this is a, a project that was really focused on, on Eric's team. And again, this is one of these projects where my job and my team's job is to support them and help them get the technology they need. You know, since we, we procured the Tyler system and as part of the Tyler system, they actually threw in their enterprise asset management system as a module that just came with what the licensing is that we bought. We have not implemented that, but subsequent to that though, Eric and his team have implemented a lot of point solutions that are actually meeting their needs today. To take on a work order management system for, for not only my team, but Eric's team would require a tremendous amount of time, particularly around defining assets, classifying assets, doing asset analysis, to see the state of those, now, state of those assets, putting, you know, planning together with how you replace and repair those. And so as, as Eric and I have talked about it, we, we don't really think the benefits to applying the Tyler Enterprise Asset Management Module at this point really offsets the cost. All it will do is take away from other priorities that you guys have set. So we're proposing that we actually go ahead and cancel that work plan item. And if there becomes a need for it, we have a solution that we can go to. But at this point in time, I, I really think Public Works is doing a great job in managing those assets. And I'm just not sure for all the effort and time and money we'd spend to do it, that we'd see the value that, that at one point we had hoped we'd get out of that kind of a solution. So I'm available for any questions that you have.
Okay. I see the button's pushed, but I'm going to jump in. So I heard you. I like it. At the same time, why is it taking so long for our businesses to have the ability to renew their business licenses online? And how much longer is it going to take?
As you've heard people say, great question. Well, it'll warm my heart when they can do it online. It's really just been a matter of priorities. Utility billing was, is the next module that we attacked and then we had business license. So honestly, it was just a matter of priorities and getting all the core financials in, getting the payroll in and all the HR and now we got the UB. So the next one up is business license.
Internal and then external. Got it. Okay. Councilman Hoerth.
Thank you. I just, my only question is, what is number four, completed unused dark fiber verification project? What does that mean?
Now that warms my heart. So one of the, one of the things that we have available at the city that I believe is, has been an underutilized resource is long ago, well before I got here, we have a bunch of dark fiber that connects all of our city facilities. And we've been using that dark fiber, but what we were able to kind of determine as we started doing some site surveys is that there is also a lot of that fiber strands that we weren't using. And so we really dug into that. We documented all the fiber in the city. We made sure we knew where the paths were. We were also validating the capacity of that fiber because what's happening is, right now, all our facilities are connected at one gigabyte. As we're doing more and more with technology, we need to really start thinking about going on to a higher speed, which is 10 gigabyte. And, you know, what we're finding out is those assets are there. There's some things we have to do with it. So that's what that was, was just.
That is really great.
Trying to find the value and, and try to avoid buying more network when we didn't need it.
I worked at Wired, you know. I don't know if you know that.
Councilmember Lesser.
I have a question, which is sort of a joint question for our acting community development director. It concerns the software that those seeking to file online for their building permits are using. This was a big issue for our prior service on council, Councilmember Hoerth's and mine, as well as Mayor Portem Montgomery. And I'm just wondering, I still am hearing some concerns about that software, that it's not necessarily as robust as it could be, that some users are finding some frustration. So I'm just curious what, sorry to put you on the spot without prepping you in advance, but I'm just curious, to what extent is that software working as it should in your view and need any sort of attention? Because this would be the opportunity to put something maybe on the work plan if you're finding a problem.
I'd be interested in knowing exactly what the circumstances were that were described to you and, and at that point, I'd be able to address those specific situations. But generally speaking, the software has made our processes entirely available 24 hours per day, whereas before you had to wait in a long line to be able to submit. And now you can submit from the comfort of your own home at any hour in the day. You don't have to come in, you don't have to wait in line and then we initiate the process internally the next day. So there are significant benefits to our process that outweigh issues just with any software. Of course, we run into hiccups here and there. Sometimes the system is down because the system is linked to GIS and Terry can attest to this, but we do have struggles when GIS is down and then the system is down and we notify applicants if you're trying to apply right now, it's not working. So we do come across that. But other than that, I think change is difficult, right? Everybody, everybody struggles with change and it's a matter of getting used to the new system, the new processes. And we're happy to handhold, folks, we have tons of tutorials on our website that help people submit through the process. We do a lot of handholding during the day. So I would be interested in knowing what the specific complaints were. It'd be better to address them that way.
I'll speak with you offline about some of the complaints I'm hearing, but just from your standpoint, there's no additional modules or supplementation that you are looking at at this time for the software that the city presently has?
This is the best of the programs. I've seen it used in multiple municipalities and it really does allow us to develop a workflow so that internally and externally, both the user and internal, not only the internal staff that are actually part of the review process, but also if a question comes to me from a council member, I can log in, I can look at the workflow and I can see the history from A through Z of every single permit. And the user is also able to see that. And so they're able to see exactly who's reviewing their plan, which, whose queue is it still in, who's reviewed it, who's still in review? And then they can call us with questions. It also gives contacts for each one of their reviewers.
Okay. Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. The answer is no. It's good as it is or the best it can be right now. Supplementation is going to be my new Scrabble word. And, all right. What else?
That is it. That concludes.
Oh, Mayor Portem Montgomery.
Oh, Director Hackelman. Just one thing. Mayor Portem and I are both on the council in 20, looking back in time, can't believe it, 2017, 18? When council approved the ERP. You weren't here yet. People that are watching this thinking, it's taken us five years to get here. It's been slow, sometimes painful. But the good thing is, is you've got almost at the finish line. You're under budget or on, on budget, which is fantastic. And you're also moving us away from notebooks, paper to non-book. So thank you for all that. And we're, we're with you. I have no problem moving it off the work plan whatsoever.
Great. Yeah. And just one of the things I might add real quick that makes the effort, I think, really representative of what the staff was done is we did this completely remote, which ERP systems were never done that way and we did it during COVID. And so again, it's a testament to staff.
We were here. We were here, thank you.[742.13][742.13](Laughter)
Yeah, I know you were in there.
By the way, Mayor Portem, David and I were also here when that was happening.
What's that?
Who? In COVID? All right, what are we going next?
Well, I don't know, do we have public comment? Is there a-
We had public comments beginning the meeting.
Okay, I don't know if you want to accept any further public comment. I thought I saw a hand raised.
Do we have a hand?
(inaudible).
Okay, all right.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hi. Hi, Debbie Van Ness. I'm here on behalf of MB Safe. I'm sorry I missed the opening public comments. I didn't realize there were gonna be any at the end. I wanted to address the homeless agenda item. When we started MB Safe in 2019, our three main goals were to educate the public about the burgeoning homeless situation, establish a community response team, and establish a good relationship with the local government and hopefully help influence some of the policy. I think we've met all those goals and we continue to refine and expand our goals. So thank you for your openness to our suggestions of hiring an outreach worker and funding some share beds, as well as your willingness to work with us and continue to address this problem. We think it's been a really fruitful collaboration, but obviously the work is not done, it will be ongoing. And we, one city coordinator or outreach worker alone cannot do the job that we have done as a team. So today, we'd like to advocate for a few things. First and foremost, first and foremost, to continue the important public-private partnership that we now have and perhaps even expanded further. We are better together and can serve our constituents together and we can also be an example of a successful one for other cities in the state. We are a small, donation-driven nonprofit without the resources of a large city budget, but we are oftentimes much more nimble in addressing some immediate needs of people on the street. We're in constant communication with each other as we move about the city. We get reports from many of our volunteers, including Joe. And some examples of our quick responses have been for Uber rides to housing, hotel stays until housing is secured, clothing and housing items to establish in new residences, getting birth certificates and IDs, things you need to get into housing. We move fast, we get that done right away, there's no waiting when people accept services. And so we'd like to establish even better communication with us.
Debbie, the two minutes is up, so where were you going?
She just muted.
What's that? Is she still on?
She's on the call, but she muted.
Oh, unmute it.
I thought it was three minutes, so sorry, and I wasn't watching the timer. Anyway, we'd like to establish even better communication with us, sharing pertinent information. I know that when I, most of you already know and work with us, I know that when I met Amy after the election, she was interested in getting, establishing a monthly or quarterly working session with us in the city. And I hope that we can still do that and so we can all make sure our goals and approach our instinct. In addition to the housing coordinator, we'd like to advocate for a mental health evaluation specialist and the health programs.
Thank you, Debbie. We got the email, but I need to get to that right away, what your asks are. Are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry, you need to get to what?
What your asks were. Because the long preamble of everything, the history we got, but there's only two minutes and now we're going past that, so I just need you to wrap it up.
Okay, well, we'd like to continue our partnership with the city. We would like to advocate for a mental health specialist and perhaps acquiring a potential regional share home. Many of the residents we speak to say Beach Cities needs our own housing options as opposed to, you know, always putting them somewhere else. And as you mentioned earlier, explore diversion programs-
Okay.
-with the help of grants.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. Okay, all right. Then where are we now?
That concludes our session this evening. We have no further presentations. We will take the feedback we receive, come back on May 16th, council.
I got a couple of things left over.
So do I.
So let's get, so for myself and Councilor Horwath, I see you, but I'll get right back to you in terms of supplementation. One thing that I would like to, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've had an issue in the past and we're going to be appointing another task force regarding outdoor dining soon, but that our boards and commissions book really doesn't address task forces. And that was one of the issues with the sustainability task force, it was one of the issues with the Bruce's Beach, whatever it might be, the task force, that we need some sort of better definition, or at least, you know, that council declares that we're gonna have one and then it declares when we're gonna sunset them and then, you know, whether our majority can remove any member for any reason that they want and of council can remove task force members, all those things. I don't think we have those written down. I think we've had issues before and so we need to have some written guidelines as to what a task force, you know, should have guidelines, what they should look like. So we have the ability to remove folks we don't want without any big to-do and/or add folks or whatever it might be. So we need some of those. The other thing I would say, I would like, again, this isn't necessarily a work plan item, it's kind of minor in nature, but I really would like to see us, we've got a mishmash, when we talk about the signage locator and that coming back, we've got a mishmash of entryway signs for Manhattan Beach. We've got an Art Deco one as you go south on Sepulveda, as you cross Rosecrans, some Art Deco thing, I think it's similar, or we don't have one on the south end of town as you drive along Sepulveda going north. We used to have one, I don't know if it's there anymore. We've got the Flintstone ones that you can't even read at Ardmore and at, by Trader Joe's on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And then we've got the north end, which is separate. I really, we've got a great city logo now. I would really just like to see the city logo at the entrance, you know, all the major entryways to Manhattan Beach. Replace those terrible signs that you can't even read with just the simplicity of Manhattan Beach with the "Since 1912." That would be one thing. Diversion, online, okay, those are the things.
Well, so we can certainly add the boards and commissions. I'm assuming there's consensus on council to update that and so we'll add that to the work plan. And then as far as the city logo at city entrances, the Public Works Department and I just discussed this today, as a matter of fact, and money is being allocated within next year's budget for signage, including things like park monument signs that we realize need to refresh and can incorporate the city, the new city logo. So we're on the same page with you.
All right, then I will shut up now. Councilor Horwath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a question. One thing, a few meetings ago, I had asked for council support to bring something forward through the community development department, which was a consideration for a, some sort of transportation, mini-transportation, you know, solution throughout the city that the downtown is sort of behind. And so that's not on the work plan, but the staff is kind of preparing a report. Does it need to be, does it need to go on the work plan so we can see that they're working on it? Or we haven't, you know, voted to actually support it yet, but they're bringing it forward, so that's where my confusion lies.
I wouldn't want to take that away from the downtown's efforts right now.
But, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, aren't they the ones who are leading the charge?
No, while staff is now kind of behind it, well, and she can speak to it, but it may also fit into the downtown dining part of that issue, so.
That's okay.
Is it free?
Report hasn't come forward yet.
Is there a question?
Well, there was a question. Do we need to put on the work plan with, in order for it to, yes?
So we've been talking about that item and as a part of the outdoor dining efforts, we are going to have to evaluate all our parking options and shuttling options and we are going to have to come up with a variety of parking solutions and shuttling solutions per our discussions with the Coastal Commission. And we are expecting that that, our research on that particular effort is going to be intertwined with our outdoor dining parking solutions effort.
So, but it may still come to council apart from that, right, before that effort is done, correct?
If that is the council's wish, yes.
Okay. So it's just a, sorry about the paper ripping. It's just a process question. You know, we haven't yet voted, we voted to bring it back to discuss, like, but it has to, they were, you know, working on all the details. So I would want to see it still come back to council, not necessarily wait for that downtown dining final report.
I think it can come back to council. I wouldn't put it on the work plan yet because I don't know the details of it. I don't want to say this is something that we're going to-
Great, okay.
-jump on board with because the things on the work plan are things we already want and we know what we're gonna budget for and things like that.
That was my question. Perfect. I'm satisfied.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anything else for any other items?
Unbelievably, no.
Okay. Mayor Portem Montgomery?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do like the boards and commission part of it, but I would ask a review of policy and procedures and Director Lemonosus, on the senior resources committee, is there a lifetime appointment? Do we have votes on it? It's the only group that's by itself, that's standalone, that's not a commission.
What is it?
It's called the Senior Resource Committee.
What, Senior Advisory Committee?
Oh, oh, oh.
Your name, pick a name you like.
I can hear you.
No structure. You need to know policy, procedure, lifetime appointment, positions, annual votes, whatever. That needs to be thrown into the mayor's and board's commission review and why it isn't in the commission.
That's fine.
And the second thing was, Director Lemonosus too, most people probably get emails, starting now, there's a gate that's an issue of Marine Field next to Senior Villas. People park and block the access to Senior Villas to get to that gate. I'm asking the gate to move over to the east 100 feet. People can access that way and not block the entrance way to Senior Villas, the in-and-out vehicles. So whether I put it here, Your Honor, is the work plan on him or just bring it up separately in budget time, I can do either way.
Director Lee, do we have any, do we have any comment on this item?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Sorry, it's the access gate at Marine Villas, sorry, Senior Villas, there's a driveway. When they built it, they had no idea, we put a gate to the soccer field right next door to the driveway.
Okay.
So three things have happened. You've got an influx of Suburbans and SUVs blocking to drop their kids off five feet from the gate, as opposed to parking in the parking lot and walking up 50 feet. So all that combination is blocked off access. Hearing more and more about it. So I'm thinking, hey, the simple solution is to move the gate, sliding gate on wheel, move it 50 feet to the east, have the sliding gate for access to the soccer field there, takes away the blockage at the driveway.
Why don't we ask Director Lee to have him and his staff take a look at it for solutions? Then when they talk to you about that afterward, then you can bring it up and put it on a future council agenda.
Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Yes, nothing else.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. City Manager?
There is actually one more item that Director Lee will describe. It has to do with parking lot number three in the downtown and I think I've had conversations with most of you about the future of that parking structure and the necessity to replace it, start planning for the replacement and what some of the options may be down there. And of course, this plays into the downtown parking situation as well. Gives us an opportunity to perhaps do some underground parking and some other retail and other types of things, but I think we both felt that it was a visible enough project in the middle of our downtown that perhaps it warrants a work plan item, but if you'd like to fill in the details I left out.
Yes, City Manager Moe summarized it well. We definitely think that there's an opportunity to not just reconstruct lot three the way it is, but as much benefit as the council would like to get out of that parcel and that parking structure, we should be trying to maximize. Additionally, as it relates to parking, there's inevitably going to be an interface with the outdoor dining and want to make sure that the outdoor dining group is cognizant of this other redevelopment effort that we'll be doing. We're looking probably to start the feasibility study work next fiscal year and then ideally get through an outreach process next year and then into design the following year so we could be in construction in that third year.
Construction of what?
That's to be determined, so.
Well, if we were smart, like we said before, what we should do is lease out the surface of parking lot three to a hotel and then underground parking connected to Metlocks and everything else. But that's just, we're smart.
So I think it's in that vein that we think this warrants being on the council work plan because there's gonna be a lot of discussion about that.
I would agree.
Great.
I agree.
And I would just second that, just to confirm what you were asking, and if you wanted a work plan, I would agree, complete with potential funding sources if it were to be a standalone parking structure, because I'm just trying to think how we would pay for it, given my recollection of some of the estimates that were involved in rebuilding it.
Fundraising?
Understood.
GoFundMe page? Yeah.
(inaudible) policy.
Okay, so we'll add that as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Nothing further.
Okay, want to thank City Manager and all our department heads and staff for putting these together and during this, and, you know, this is what we use as a benchmark for our city management and he uses in turn for the departments and so working together, we all move forward. So appreciate all the effort. There's a lot that's been on our plates, there's a lot we've done the last few years and there's a lot more we're gonna do, but appreciate all your efforts and all your support and together we make the train move forward. All right, with that, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting, is that correct? On March 21st at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Okay, thank you.
Here's how you can make your own face covering in a few easy steps with items you can find around the house, like an old scarf, a bandana or a hand towel, or you can make a face covering out of an old t-shirt. Fold it to the middle from the bottom. Fold it to the middle from the top. Fold it again to the middle from the bottom and again from the top. And then, two rubber bands.